The Chair will entertain a motion under Article W. If there is a moving party, come on up or get to a microphone.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Laura Evans, 77 High Street. Just a quick little bit of background. My husband and I moved to Rockport in 1980. We raised our four children here. I'm a grandmother, a business owner of a business for the past 35 years here in Rockport, a Rotarian. I served on the school committee for six years. I'm also Rockport's Citizen Engagement Coordinator, a volunteer post, and been very busy in that capacity of late. Article I arose out of the Women's March Symposium, a gathering at the library of some 60 or 70 men and women in the beginning of February. We wanted to share our stories from the different Women's Marches we attended on January 21st, from Boston to Atlanta, DC to Rome. Such a powerful experience, over 5 million people standing up around the world in protest to the newly inaugurated President and his administration and his agenda, and not one arrests. Our local group is 100% volunteer. We have no budget. We have no funders. We are just committed. We took up this welcoming town initiative because it seemed foundational to us that before anything else, one needs to feel safe and secure and welcome our visitors and workers here at home in Rockport. That's the status quo. We have always assumed this in practice, but now, given the confusion and apprehension prevailing today, we see a need for our current welcoming practice, the status quo in Rockport today, to be formulated into policy. This article is a non-binding statement of values. It is a request, and here I'm reading from the article, "to see if the town will vote to affirm our community's continued commitment to equity for all residents and visitors alike, regardless of immigration status, in order to preserve our historic tradition as a welcoming community, and additionally, to consider formulating a municipal policy regarding sanctuary for undocumented immigrants or any act or anything relative thereto." This is a citizen's petition. This article itself requesting a town policy puts no federal dollars at risk. We are simply stating the status quo and asking for a policy. Please note that the word sanctuary in the term sanctuary town or sanctuary city itself is not a fixed concept. Each municipality defines its meaning for itself. Hence you hear welcoming town or sanctuary town. In educating myself on this issue, I went to Salem recently to hear about their Welcoming Town Act, which just passed this week, by the way, and learned that being undocumented itself is not a crime. People who overstay their visas are guilty only of an administrative violation, punishable by a fine. Many of us are new to this topic and still learning. To that end, the Women's March Symposium held a public meeting at the Community House on March 7th. You can find that meeting on Cape Ann TV now and also on YouTube. In his presentation there, Police Chief Horvath was part of the panel, and he noted that current policy with Rockport Police is to ensure the safety of townspeople and visitors alike. Rockport Police do not enforce federal immigration laws. Only when someone breaks the law and is arrested and charged, do police ask for identification papers exposing that accused individual to the national criminal justice system. Such is the status quo, and we are not proposing any changes to that. In our town, Selectmen set policy. Article W requests that they clarify for us and our visitors either the current practice or another practice that might better serve. The League of Women Voters, I understand, will be holding a debate among the four Selectmen candidates on the 13th of April, and we hope they will bring forth their ideas and plans on this topic at that time to make the current practice into a policy. This is a time Article W vote is not about debating the issues themselves. We don't want to get into where Obama was born or what dark money is all about. The issue that we're voting on is about whether or not Rockport needs a policy. At a second meeting on this topic hosted by the GOP, one citizen noted that Rockport doesn't have a large immigration population and that this whole thing looks like an answer looking for a problem. If there was no problem around immigration in Rockport, we would not today be experiencing such vitriol, such a hate storm of fear mongering and intimidation, verbal and physical, and threats. Our meeting at the Community House ended in disruption. People were intimidated, felt fearful, said they had never experienced anything like this in Rockport. Bullies get braver online, and threatening emails, ugly online postings have been rampant this last month. Take a look at Facebook when you get a chance and see for yourself. Trying to spare the town meeting the exposure to the hyperbole and fear and to give everyone more time to learn about the issues and to give more voters a chance to vote in the privacy of the ballot box, we asked the town if we could withdraw this article from town meeting and instead put a question on the town ballot on May 2nd. The town representative said, "No, we could not withdraw the citizen's petition. It's not legally possible." So, we persisted. We collected over 600 signatures in a few weeks, more than there are voters in this room right now. So, the welcoming city question will indeed be on the ballot on May 2nd, thanks to all who carried and signed petitions in this ambitious campaign. The threatening attitude informs the current administration and emboldens bullies everywhere. If a bully threatens you, the successful response is not to cower and run away. As a Rockport business owner, I don't plan to cower and run away. I want the town to formulate a welcoming town policy. My company is 35 years old. It's always been in Rockport. We brought the first internet connection to Rockport in the early 90s. I've hired hundreds of workers. I've paid, the company has paid millions of dollars in taxes, local, state, federal. We've hosted in Rockport interns, visitors from Armenia, Bulgaria, Romania, Spain, Switzerland, Norway, Italy, Germany, Japan, Czechoslovakia, Israel, Russia, Holland, Austria, Brazil, and the United Kingdom. Some rented apartments, some stayed at B and Bs in Rockport, ate out, went to the dentist, fell in love, not necessarily in that order. Our guests enriched our lives and they taught us new ways to think and live and experience the world. They all felt welcome and safe and secure in our trusting community today. Today, overseas colleagues I know are canceling their plans to come to conferences in the U.S. One such colleague asked me, "What's Rockport's policy? Am I safe coming to Rockport?" For Rockporters and our visitors alike, please vote yes on Article W in favor of formulating a welcoming town policy. But before I go away, I would like to re-ask the question to withdraw Article W from town meeting because we are going to be on the ballot, and it's late in the afternoon. The numbers have dwindled to 200 and something out of, what is it, 5,400 voters? Do we really want to have a debate on the issues? And can we, my question is, can we legally withdraw, move a motion to withdraw the article?
You don't have to. We have, there's no motion yet. If you are making a motion, make a motion.
I am making a motion to withdraw Article W from town meeting.
No, no, you don't even need to do that. You just don't have to make a motion. So, are you making a motion?
I am making a motion.
No, no, you're not.
Talk to Brian for a minute. Laura, talk to Brian. Go over there and talk to Brian. He'll help you. Free legal advice. You get what you pay for.
Okay, sorry about that, folks. There is no motion.
Anybody else want to move this article? Anyone else want to move the article? Toby, do you want to move the article?
I wish to speak.
There's nothing to speak about. Wait, 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 wait. I thought that we had a party was going to move the motion, this motion here. She instead explained some things and is not moving the motion. Anybody in this room can move this motion and then we can talk about it, but right now, there's nothing on the floor to talk about, so...
I move the motion.
Okay, there we go.
And let me explain why.
Hold on just a moment. Is it seconded?
Of course it's seconded.
Moved and seconded. Okay, now go ahead.
Toby Ursen, 95 Granite Street. I mean, just fairness and procedure, you have no right to address the town meeting unless you're speaking to a motion, and to make a speech going on well over five minutes and then cut other people off, I'd rather not hear more either. It simply is not right.
Mr. Sullivan.
Since it's been moved, I would speak on it. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I would urge that this be defeated, and I'd like to make four points concerning that position. I'm very sorry. Brian Sullivan, 7 Gott Street. First, I stand against this, not because I haven't been educated to the issues, I believe I've studied them, and it's not because I hate people or I'm a bully or I'm intimidating. I firmly believe that there are good, dedicated, well-meaning citizens who can think about this kind of an issue, immigration, federal law, and come down on diametrically opposed stances. I believe that's true. I also do not stand against this because I feel that local civic engagement is bad for the community. In, to the contrary, I think these are important issues. I think it's fully appropriate to think globally, act locally. Things like this can be addressed in many different settings, but as far as town meeting goes or a town ballot goes, I suggest that we have enough to divide us on issues like a DPW barn and how much money to spend for the police department. So, it's not that I'm against these kinds of matters being discussed by citizens. I applaud the petitioners for wanting to advance this discussion. However, town meeting has enough cut out for it with all of the challenges that we face. I would suggest to you, if this is your issue, how are you going to feel in a year or so from now where other people who have strong feelings about other national divisive issues want to have a town meeting discussion about reproductive rights, pro-life issues, pro-choice issues? That'd be a hell of a town meeting, and I think we'd all appreciate the fact that we now have bars in town when that discussion concluded. There are many divisive issues that we can discuss here on the floor of town meeting. I don't think any of them are unworthy of serious thoughtful debate by dedicated citizens, but here at town meeting and on the town ballot, I would prefer at 4 o'clock in the afternoon to find the things that you and I may agree on. You and I may agree on how much money the schools need, or we don't and we have to work that out. But why are we going to divide ourselves when we can agree on certain local issues? Why are we going to get wrapped around the axle fighting about immigration, a national defense budget, abortion rights, or any other divisive national issue? Were the issues all, but not here, I urge that this be rejected. Thank you.
We'll hear from Mr. Campbell first and then the folks in the back.
First of all, I just want to say congratulations.
Now, who are you?
I'm sorry, my apologies. Don Campbell, 5 King Street Court.
Thank you.
And I want to say congratulations to the girls, U-12 hockey team, who advanced to the championship game next week. A lot of local Rockport girls in that, they did a great job. Congratulations to them. With that being said, Mr. Moderator, town officials, and you, my friends and fellow citizens of Rockport, I want to be perfectly clear. I stand before you today not as a member of the Board of Selectmen or in any official capacity, simply a concerned citizen of our great town. The opinions I am about to share with you are my own and in no way are reflective nor should be attributed to any of my fellow board members. Since the beginning, I have made no secret that I stand in full and complete opposition to this citizen petition and will continue to oppose it whenever presented. I feel very strongly that it is bad policy and bad in general for Rockport. It has pitted friend against friend and neighbor against neighbor. This is not who we are as a community. Please allow me to explain my views. One of the main reasons that my wife and I moved to Rockport and started our family here over 20 years ago was because we knew Rockport to already be a welcoming, fun, beautiful, interesting, historical, culturally rich, and inviting place for all people. Our family is always seeking new adventures, and we love experiencing the charm and history that our amazing town has to offer. Mr. Moderator, yes, a familiar refrain I've often heard is that people are afraid of losing the charm of Rockport, whether it be by alcohol regulations, town policies, or capital improvement projects. Some fear as they feel, some fear they feel it will adversely affect the fabric of our community. Change in either direction is not usually well-received, but the ability for all voices to be heard is critical to its final form and outcome. This fear, however, seldom translates into having the effects anticipated, but all voices must be heard nonetheless. This petition, however, in my opinion, has the real potential to change the fabric and charm of Rockport in ways that we do not know or may not even be able to foresee. Admittedly, the language is non-binding and seemingly innocuous, however, it's a planted seed and in the final product, it may not be known. I will not stand here and tell you the horror stories of the innocent lives that have been forever affected by this policy in other cities or towns, and conversely, I will not tell you of the success stories either. To do that would only continue us down a path where our opposing viewpoints will never intersect in a meaningful way and only further divide us even more as a community. This petition has divided Rockport in ways that I believe the petitioners did not intend, but did nonetheless. Now we are faced with the reality of dealing with this as a community, and my sincere hope is that we can find common ground within the context of reasonable and respectful dialogue. We are Rockporters and are among the greatest communities on the North Shore and beyond. We will heal, persevere, and grow stronger from this experience together. We could sit here all day and squabble over immigration policy citing an endless cadre of statistics that we'll never come to agree on. Let's remember that 72.35% of all statistics are made up on the spot. I see this as counterproductive, and after watching presentations hosted by both sides of this issue, it has never been more apparent. Our debates should not focus on numbers but on what sound policy is, and I am convinced, convicted in believing that this is not sound policy for Rockport. Mr. Moderator, if our stated goal is to present Rockport as a welcoming community, why are we not acutely focused on welcoming our veterans who gave life and limb in pursuit of freedom and the defense of democracy? They have been neglected for far too long and are most deserving of our kindness, generosity, and inclusiveness. Why are we not focused on welcoming those of legal societal standing or the impoverished families that are citizens of this great country who are in dire need of our assistance? American citizens should always come first, regardless of their country of origin. This is not to say that we have no room for those wishing to immigrate here, but it must be done legally. Once here legally, once here legally, they are fully American and have proven their willingness to take the arduous steps necessary towards earning U.S. citizenship. We need these people. We want these great and proud people, and they are who we should be helping and celebrating. I dare say, most of our community would willingly open their hearts, homes, and wallets. I would gladly call my wife and tell her to set a few extra places at our table. It wouldn't be the first time, and would be done as many times as is necessary, and I know I am not alone in this offer of support. Some will say, "Why can't we welcome all regardless of immigration status," and then attempt to lay claim to the moral high ground because they feel as though their position is more compassionate than the other side. Compassion is noble and necessary in today's society, however, it never provides either side the moral high ground. To me, the answer is quite simple.
Don, kind of wrap it up.
I'm sorry. I had, okay, I have about a half a page left. Is that okay? Yeah. Let me finish up. Okay, I apologize. "It was expressed by proponents of this petition," this is the last paragraph, I promise, "it was expressed by proponents of this petition that people may not feel safe speaking at town meeting on such a sensitive subject. Therefore, they were exploring alternative language, venues, or processes to achieve the desired outcome. Just as they are entitled to speak up, opponents of this petition are as well. Mr. Moderator, in closing, I urge the great people of Rockport to oppose this petition article and then immediately reach out to a friend or neighbor and extend a hand of friendship. We are Rockporters and we will get through this together." Thank you.
All right. We'll go through the folks and the microphone, and don't worry, we'll hear from you if you want to speak. Go ahead, and try to keep this as briefly, as brief as you can, if you would. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jonathan Ring, 9 Poole's Lane. I think we can all agree that there are problems with our immigration system as it is. That's not a partisan issue. But whatever problems are existing in our immigration system, this, whether it's a binding or a non-binding policy, this isn't going to solve those problems, and instead it has caused more division. See, I was born because of immigration. My mom's an immigrant. My, her sisters are immigrants. Her family is immigrants, you know, from Portugal. They all came here legally. If it wasn't for immigration, I wouldn't have even been born, which, I don't know if anybody has any regrets on that now, but, and my mom would be embarrassed to know that I mentioned her, and my brother too. Oops, sorry. But we wonder, why is this so divisive? Because there is a promotion of illegal immigration that people are opposed to. We want the laws of our country obeyed, and we want the entrance requirement, and it's to say that illegal immigrants are welcome regardless of how they got here is to treat legal immigrants, those who have sacrificed and worked hard and waited in line, is to treat them unfairly and unequally. But the other thing is, is that, what are you saying to the people who are voting no that are opposed to it based on the fact that they just don't want to partake and support illegal behavior? Are you telling them that they're hateful, that they're bigots? Is that they're racist, that they hate immigrants? Does that make any sense? Do I hate my own family because I would vote no on this? We had a forum, a symposium, we had a forum of the opposition, we had people calling up saying we were a hate group, trying to disrupt the event. We've had people saying they were intimidated at that event, and yet I've had no word from the police. We had it at the police station, at the conference room of the police station. Nobody told me there that anybody was intimidated. Nobody reported anything. So, a lot of lies are being spread about those who are opposed to the issue, but going to the actual issue itself, I do agree that it may be non-binding today, but you're advocating that the town create a policy of sanctuary for illegal behavior. And I do commend the police department for saying that they will follow the laws and that they do follow the laws, and yet if we create, if the advocates succeed in creating policy in the future that interfere with the police department's responsibilities, that could create problems for our town. And lastly, you know, there is a problem in an illegal immigration, I mean, just this past August, a woman was attacked outside of my house on Poole's Lane by an illegal immigrant. Now, this isn't to say that every single illegal immigrant would actually do that, but the fact is, is that for illegal immigration, you're lacking a screening process for those who have prior records coming into our country, so you don't know who's who. You know, it's basically inviting a problem and creating a problem, but like I said, that can't be solved with this issue, but trying to develop policies in the future of sanctuary will create further problems in, you know, for our town, for law enforcement. So, I just ask you to consider voting no on this. It is important, it is an important discussion, but if we want to change in our immigration policies and our laws, we need to direct that to Congress through citizens contacting their congressmen and on the federal level, not on the local level where we can't solve that. Thank you.
We're going to hear some of these people, then we'll get to people who are sitting. What I'm going to do, and I'll probably, I'll try to do this in the future, when you get to four minutes, I'll give you a light little bang with a gavel here and try to get this moving as quickly as we can.
Curtis Wright, Ruthern Way. I'm speaking against the proposal. It seeks to use the vehicle of town government to express a policy or an opinion or a statement of values for the town. And there's an issue here far greater than anything to do with immigration. Does the town have the right to speak for an individual, to compel them by force of resolution, to hold a specific opinion on an issue? And the answer is no. Unequivocally no. That is not American. Fundamental of the Constitution is the right of an individual to hold personal beliefs, including unpopular beliefs, to be able to express them, to be able to discuss them, debate them publicly, and to change them or hold to them as they see fit to do so. And I twice took a binding oath to defend the Constitution of the United States. This is the only most fundamental and basic check on tyranny. The right of free opinion by the public. Asking government at any level to affirm what we think, dictate what we think, say what we should believe, shape how we should view an issue, is violative. Individuals on both sides are actually quite afraid to speak. And far from elevating a complex issue that requires rational debate and frankly, a humane solution, this issue has become degraded, divisive, and disgusting, and quite frankly, dangerous. All force does, even the gentlest of force, is to foster surface compliance and to breed bitter resolution, and if severe enough, violence, and it is possible here. So, this has to stop. I stand opposed to this or any other resolution which claims to ask what the town believes. Thank you.
Just a procedural matter, if you're reading something, if you could bring it up, we can get it into the record, and so thank you, Curtis, for that. We'll hear a couple more folks here, then we're going to hear from Mr. Sharfstein over here, and we'll get to everybody that wants to speak on this.
Hi, I'm Joe Rukeyser, 1 Martha's Lane. I'm speaking in support of the motion. This motion does not call at all for any change in immigration policy. This article is a local one. It is specific to Rockport and the people who live here. There is no question, however, that it is in response to what we are all now living through, a climate of daily escalations of rhetoric and actions that cause uncertainty, depersonalization, fear, and vulnerability among many, if not all, of us, particularly those among immigrant... those among immigrant families, regardless of their immigration status. There are hundreds of cities and towns across America who are reacting just as we are to the continual targeted threats, both rumored and real, that frighten us, our families, our neighbors, and our broader community. Many of us just don't know who or what to trust. This is not creating divisiveness, this is revealing divisiveness. This article affirms our dedication to preserving our community as a place of trust and safety. We are a community not because of incorporation or laws, but because we live, work, teach, learn, go to the beach, eat, protect, and argue with one another with respect, and a belief in our mutual interdependence. It is for that reason that our police department ensures the safety of all by fostering community policing. And our schools treat all equally, our businesses serve all equally, and we are all here equally to vote freely. All of us, whether full or part-time residents, visitors, workers, caregivers, public servants, volunteers, expect, expect to be and are treated equally, and are equally important in supporting and enriching our community. We must preserve that. It is the foundation of our small community. The origin and intent of our article, this motion, affirms our commitment to equal protection of all who live, work, and visit our community. I urge you to vote in favor of it.
We're going to hear from Mr. Sharfstein, then we'll continue the procession. Jerry? Joe, if you can bring that up for us.
Hi, my name is Jerry Sharfstein. I live at 2A Twin Light Circle. This is my first town meeting, so I invite all the other first town meeting 10 days to come on over. We all have a moral compass within us, principles concerning the distinction between right and wrong behavior, or good and bad behavior. Each person's moral compass varies on issues. We may agree on some issues, and at the same time disagree on others. My moral compasses have been influenced by my upbringing, and recently by my chosen faith. I believe in the worth and dignity of every person. I believe in justice, equity, and compassion in human relations. I have respect for the interdependent web of all existence, which every one of us is a part of. And I also believe that no person is illegal. I work hard on a daily basis to live up to these principles. I understand that I have flaws, that I am not perfect. None of us are. I thought long and hard on this issue, read many articles with regard to individuals who are undocumented. When I picture an undocumented person, I see many different faces, people who want to and will lead a life of honesty, integrity, and respect, just as everyone here today who is voting as a member of our town does. With these beliefs in mind, and not allowing fear to rule my decision, the true north of my moral compass tells me to vote yes and support Article W. I'd like to read a quote to you, all of you, from L.A. Weissel, who wrote the book Night, and he was a prisoner of, prisoner of war during World War II, which I feel strongly about and supports my decision to speak out on this, this issue today. Those who keep si, who kept silent yesterday will remain silent tomorrow. I will not remain silent.
Eleanor, Eleanor Goldman, 13 Pleasant Street. I am for the resolution. There are legal arguments, financial arguments, and moral arguments to be made. Everybody is making arguments. I will be brief and simply say I am for the resolution. It simply asks to uphold our current laws and policies. Should we ask our local police to do the jobs of the federal government, or not? I support our local government and our local police doing the job that we pay them to do. That is why I am in support of the petition.
Terry Land in 7 Middle Road. I guess I'm using my outside voice. I just want to thank everybody here for coming here. This has been a long day. I know some folks couldn't come here, and this is, I just want to read this because there's a lot to say about this. For 26 years, I've been a public school teacher. Four of them, I was a director of a K-12 art program. I've taught in elementary schools, middle schools, and I currently teach in a high school. Besides teaching my specific curriculum of study, I'm expected to model personal integrity and follow protocols and rules. Students must sign in if they are late, and I'm accountable for logging their attendance. It's my duty to know where my students are, even if they are temporarily leaving the classroom to attend to personal or school needs. In our school, we have an honor roll and an honor code. Students are expected to honor it and have personal integrity. As a matter of fact, our new building that we are housed in has many new security systems in place, including 200 cameras in the hallways in the surrounding campuses. In addition to this, we have key-coded gate entrances that log all teachers' comings and goings into the parking lot. Into, in addition to this, we have a security protocol where teachers are also required to sign in, log in and log out in a sheet in the main office if we leave the school for lunch, or if we travel to another school. All students who are late are expected to sign in at the office, and they receive a computer timestamp pass that permits them to begin their day at school. This is all required in our public school. Personally, I find it a bit Orwellian, but as American patriot Thomas Paine's once said, he said, "These are the times that try men's souls," and I think we're in those kinds of times right now. If any of you are in this auditorium and are still on the fence about this article, I would ask you to think what type of examples we are going to set for our children if we go down this road of Sanctuary City, where in truth we are violating federal immigration law. What type of example are we setting for our children? In my opinion, the question for us is this: Is it right to violate law to do good? And I would submit no. But I would also ask each one of you here to search your heart and ask yourself this question, which I've tried to ask at the last two meetings, and I was hissed down. What can I personally do to show love for the most vulnerable? And if anyone would like to seek me out, and because I'm in contact with world charities, world organizations that have interest infrastructures in the darkest of places in this planet, and I would be more than happy to direct anybody in this audience to these wonderful organizations that are there helping the most vulnerable of us. Thank you very much.
I was fortunate enough to take part in the immigration presentation that Chief Horvath was also kind enough to speak to us at. And I was very interested to find out that the official position of the Rockport Police Department is that we do not check for immigration. It comes up as an, as a, as a point of information that only is triggered upon criminal arrest of, of a suspect. More importantly, Chief Horvath doesn't feel that he's being funded to check for immigration or to apply that function to anybody in the community. In the current policing model, the chief wants to dedicate his resources to what he sees are the primary responsibilities of the police department, and he also spoke of what he feels is going to be a diminishing force, less personnel over time. So he's looking to do more with less. So my, the, the, the most important issue in terms of breaking the law, if that's, if that's your most important point on, on opposing this issue, if the argument came down exclusively to an assertion of being dead-set against breaking the law, then we should be consistent in applying potential penalties for other administrative infractions, because this isn't a crime, it's an administrative infraction. Another administrative infraction that many people may be familiar with, I know I am, is getting a speeding ticket. If you oppose this article, and you don't agree with being deported and torn from your family if you get a speeding ticket, then you're a hypocrite. So I'd, I'd look in your own heart and see what's fair. Thank you.
John, if you've written something, you want to bring that to us?
I think she missed me with my lunch. Aunt Patrice Hickey, 11 Eden Road. I'm speaking in support of this article. This article only says that we want to have a continued commitment. I understand people feel like if we say as a town that we are taking a particular position, it's as if we're acting like everyone in the town has that position, but that's not how democracy works. Petition articles are generally brought forward to get a sort of like, it's like a sense of the Senate vote. How does the town feel about how things are going? That's always how it goes. It's a petition article, it doesn't have budget consequences, generally. So, this petition article, however, does bring forward possible budget benefit, questions, which is something John started to address. This petition article says, "Let's stick with what we got, and let's make a policy." It doesn't force us to do anything. It says, "Stick with what we got and make a policy," right? The alternative to that is that we have placed upon us by the federal government a task which is not part of our local police task, which is checking people's immigration status. We don't have the funding for the personnel for that. We don't have the detaining cells. We don't have cells where you can detain families. In fact, when I was on the Finance Department, too long ago to mention, we had a cell before, in the old police station that was literally locked with a rope. So, that's why we had to build a new police station. It was well worth it. But all of the potential coming down from the top immigration policies have financial implications for the town. So we don't get out of having this discussion by pretending we're not having the discussion.
I would just like to answer, Mr. Ring, I believe he called me a liar just now.
You know what, Laura?
I want to just correct the record.
I want to, I want to hear from you, but I want to hear from all these other people first, because you've spoken.
Should I go to the end of the line?
I just have to, go, yeah, go to the end of the line. And I'm sorry to do that to anybody, but it's our bylaw.
Hi, Nicole Altieri, 7 Country Club Road. And I just wanted to speak, first of all, I think that Rockport can be a town which helps people that are in poverty, which welcomes veterans, and which also can pass this motion for Article W. I don't think it's an either-or proposition. I think we have it within us to do all of those things. I also, I also think that this speaks to people who are currently working, living, and visiting our town. This isn't an open door to invite everyone who is here undocumented into our town to live. In fact, where would we put these people? And, and common sense tells us that that is not what we are doing, opening the floodgates. This is for people who are already working, living, and visiting here. And again, as Laura said, sanctuary is something that has no legal definition, and so the policy would be up to us to decide what that means for the town of Rockport, and what, what would make sense for our community. As for why we might need a statement like this, if we are already, as I feel, a very welcoming community, lots of organizations, schools, nonprofits, municipalities have mission statements and statements of values. That doesn't mean that there was a problem, or that the organization didn't have those values before they made a statement. It's just them declaring and making clear what those values and priorities are. So, that's all I have to say.
Larry Salo, 45 Stockholm. When making a decision either individually or as a group, there is one thing we need to do and one thing we shouldn't do. What we need to do is, when we make a decision, is to put ourselves in a position to win. And in two months of bickering back and forth, I haven't heard one tangible benefit to the town of Rockport. So I don't think we're putting ourselves in a position to win if we vote in favor of this. The thing that we shouldn't do when making this decision is leave anything to chance. We know that President Trump is threatening to hold federal funding of any community that goes down this avenue. So to leave our federal funding to chance would be foolish, in my opinion. And I know some of the ones that are in support of this would probably be one of the first ones to complain if I jumped in front of them in the line at the deli. But because they're illegal, and they jump in front of an immigrant that's going through the process properly, somehow that's okay. I don't think it is. Now, I guess it's, we're a feel-good community. Kids don't lose anymore, they just don't win. You don't get fired from your job, you're economically terminated. They're not illegal aliens, they're undocumented workers. I have a solution. Vote this article down, and give them all trophies for trying, and we'll all be feel, all be feeling good.
Hi, my name is Gary Gorsoka. I live on 75 Main Street. I moved here about seven years ago after living 30 years in New Mexico, which is a majority-minority state. I have nothing against legal immigration or refugees, but I am against illegal immigration and against this motion. And I want to kind of bring it back to Rockport. For me, I've been to all the meetings, I talked to the police chief after the meeting, asked him, "How many ICE detainer requests has Rockport received in our history?" And I believe, if I'm correct, he said the answer was zero. So I'm one of those people that feels that this is a solution looking for a problem. So I'm against it for that reason, and I, I also feel so, I also heard in one of the meetings that if someone is arrested in Rockport, they get sent to another detention center somewhere out of Rockport. That's where the detainer request would go to. So again, it doesn't affect, affect us here. And finally, people have been saying that, no, this is all about compassion and all about that, but what it really comes down to, and I didn't vote for either major candidate in the last presidential election, but I feel that this is a, a larger move, a larger, larger phenomenon to kind of speak out against the Trump presidency. And I don't necessarily agree with anything the Trump presidency represents, but I don't think that this is the way to go about doing it. And so for that reason, it's not an issue in Rockport, and I don't want to be on either side of making a statement for or against the presidency. I just don't want it to pass here. Thank you.
Anybody not in line and want to speak? Hasn't been heard? Yes?
Henry Betts, 13 Pennsance Road. About five years ago, I had to, I appeared in federal court supporting the non-deporting of a woman who was a druggie and a prostitute, and she was going to be deported, and I voted, I had to testify that she shouldn't be deported because she was being worked with to straighten out her life. And if she went back to where she was going back to with her two kids, it was a very dangerous place to go. And she didn't get deported. Having said that, however, I think- Having said that, however, I think what we're talking about, the problem is that we have divided Republicans and Democrats on a national level who, for whatever reason, I'm not using statesmanship or women's statesmanship or whatever to deal with this issue. We're so into everything's right and everything's wrong, everything you say is right and everything I say is wrong, that we can't see the real issues. And to me, this issue on Rockport, like many others, gets in the way of the real issue on immigration. We're not going to deport 12 million people. We're just not going to do it. The United States will never deport 12 million people who are not citizens. It's just not, it's not going to happen. So the real issue is, which this does not address, but gets in the way, is how do we get these 12 million people to be legal? And we can't do that in Rockport, but the federal government can do that. I heard on TV before I came over here, the frustration of someone who was on one of the programs talking about, "There are ways that we can make people legal and put people in the system so they're documented or undocumented, whatever they are. We can put people in the system so they become legal, but no one wants to deal with this. No one wants to address it that way." And that's a shame. And what I really wish, if we did anything in Rockport, is write a letter to our governor, to the state senators and representatives and say, "You need to work on this. You need to get, stop being a Democrat or Republican, start being statesman-like." But that would be too hard for us to do, apparently, today. So, I don't know whether I'm for, I'm not for this petition, but it's not because I think it gets in the way of the real issue in the United States, that this only gets in the way of the real discussions that need to go on.
I'm Diane Vella, 17 King Street. And I want to bring this home. I live on King Street. I witness every summer people walking by my house, speaking many languages, dressed in a variety of ways, to go and have fun on beach, front beach that's at the foot of my street. One of the things that I'm afraid of, if we do not pass this and do not take a public stand, that we are welcoming, that these people will, one, stay away and hurt our economy, or, two, because the vitriol has been revealed, that people do not, there are people here that do not like others, that do not want to have people here that dress different, look different, sound different, are colored different. And I fear for them, that will be in some way discriminated against. So I think it's important that we have a public stance. And I also think, when I look at the graph that's on page 13, that says, "In the last 12 years, 40% drop in population in this city for families between the ages of 30 and 59." If we don't take a stance that we are welcoming, we will become the world's largest assisted living.
It is getting close to an hour on this article, and I just want to get a sense of how many people have not made up their minds. Mr. Char. All right, there is a motion to move the question, and that requires a two-thirds vote. It is not debatable. And if you want to end debate, you will press 1. If you want to continue debate, you will press 2. And that requires a two-thirds vote, and we're getting ready to set that up. There we go. All those in favor of ending debate, please press 1. And all those opposed, press 2. And we have eight more seconds. Okay, thank you. And that motion passes, so debate will end, and now we will vote on Article W. You've heard and seen the motion, and again, this is just affirmation and suggestion and does not cause any action to take place. All those in favor of Article W, press 1. And those opposed, press 2. And you will have eight seconds. Go. The motion passes. We will now entertain a motion under Article Z, which is equally as fun. It's to accept the reports. And I'll let Mitch read that.
Mr. Moderator, Select Person Sarah Wilkinson moves that the town accept the reports of its officers, boards, departments, committees, and commissions as printed in the 2016 Annual Town Report or as otherwise submitted to Town Meeting.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. Raise your hand, that Simon Says thing, you know? Opposed, the same sign. That motion carries, and it is unanimous. Now, we have lottery items. D, which means that we're going to go B, C, D, and E. And Pat Brown is going for Hillary.
Isn't it? What is it? I'm sorry, let me repeat that confusion. I pulled Article D. That means we'll be hearing Articles B, C, D, and E. I will entertain a motion under Article B.
Madam Moderator, Roger Lesch moves that the town appropriate and transfer from Free Cash the sum of $4,000 to be expended...
Silence, please.
...to be expended under the direction of the Board of Selectmen to fund a grant to Action Inc., 180 Main Street, Gloucester, Massachusetts.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? This motion to $4,000 from Free Cash to the Board of Selectmen to fund Action Inc. All those in favor, oh, question?
One quick question, sorry. Betsy Nahas, 2 Pride Lane. Question, is this supported by the Finance Committee and by the Board of Selectmen?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, all those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, the same sign. The motion carries. Entertain a motion under Article C.
Madam Moderator, Select Person Erin Battistelli moves that the town appropriate and transfer from Free Cash the sum of $3,000 to be expended under the direction of the Board of Selectmen to fund a grant to Hawk, 27 Congress Street, Salem, Mass.
Moved and seconded, any discussion on $3,000 from Free Cash to fund Hawk?
Madam Moderator, the Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee support the article.
Thank you. You've heard the motion. All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, the same sign. Motion carries. The chair will recognize a motion under Article D.
Madam Moderator, Selectman Don Campbell moves that the town appropriate and transfer from Free Cash the sum of $3,100 to be expended under the direction of the Board of Selectmen to fund a grant to Senior Care Inc., 5 Blackburn Center, Gloucester, Mass.
Moved and seconded, this is transfer from Free Cash to $3,100 to Senior Care, and the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee do support this. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, the same sign. Motion carries. No. Getting late. Article E, the chair will entertain a motion under Article E.
Yes, Ms. Town Clerk. Select Person Sarah Wilkinson moves that the town appropriate and transfer from Free Cash the sum of $5,000 to be expended under the direction of the Board of Selectmen to fund a grant to the Open Door, 28 Emerson Avenue, Gloucester, Mass.
All right, the motion, $5,000, moved and seconded. $5,000 from Free Cash to support Open Door. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, the same sign. Motion carries.